I'd like to lead the debate in the United States of America. The United Republic, for which stands, domination, under our individual freedom and justice.
First thing we'll do is open the public hearing for the Tuxedo Farms Upland Park clearing, filling, and grading permit. So if somebody would just give us a brief description of what you plan to do. Oh, I need a motion to open the public hearing first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Public hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. My name is Chuck Uchig. I'm a professional engineer, the senior associate with the firm of Langton Engineering. We're responsible for the site civil engineering drawings for this project. This part of the application is pretty straightforward. We're looking for the board hopefully to grant the clearing and grading permit. The objective is for us to be able to fall the trees on the Upland parcel and then the window that we have so we don't disturb the bats. There's really no, and I think there's a little confusion, there's no really proposed grading as part of this application. Really, there's just the installation of a steel fence around a disturbed area. That disturbed area is, for all intents and purposes, the same as you have seen before. I described this last month. So this is about knocking the trees down, and really that's all this application entails. There is a piece of work that's part of the Commons that deals with the well and the water made, but that's part of the other applications. Again, just so it's clear, this is just about getting the trees down. We will be submitting a full set of site plan approval drawings that will include the normal grading plans, utility plans, layout lines, et cetera. I'll be glad to answer any questions relative to this specific application.
I believe we don't need a tree survey here, right?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. I don't see any members of the public other than, Amelia, you're a member of the public in addition to the town board. If you have any questions or comments?
I just got here, so I'm just gonna listen.
This is the CFG permit public hearing for Tuxedo Farms. Maybe we ought to just wait a couple minutes more in case somebody is, I hear footsteps.
It could just be my wife coming up.
We're saving a seat in the front.
Right in the front. Won't somebody join me?
We just started the public hearing for the CFG permit for Upland Park. So as a distinguished member of the public, if you have any comments or questions?
No comment would be, I'm looking forward to it getting started.
As are we.
How was gonna be my comment as well was that, you know, we were so excited to see it on this schedule. It looks like it doesn't really go in for it.
We're ready to go. I'll speak for my client. He's ready to go. If you gave him a building permit tomorrow, I think he'd start building houses.
Do you have any comments about the CFG permit for Upland Park? Yes.
Are you speaking to me? Yeah, no. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were talking to me when I came in and like sat right in front.
Yours.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Charles, thank you. No comments.
So one question.
We can, we'll get comments from the board later on after the public hearing. All right, I think we can close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to close it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Before we start the regular meeting, I just want to acknowledge Chris Kasker. This is Chris's, there's no cake or anything. This is probably gonna be Chris's last meeting unless we have a special one in December, which I hope. As many of you know, Chris has been elected to the town board, and by law, he cannot serve on this board, the town board. So I assume you're not gonna resign from the town board before you even start. Conveniently, his term is up at the end of January, oh, end of December, so he doesn't even have to resign. He'll just out of the way, and he'll start his service on the town board. And it's just a continuation of Chris's service to the community. You are a volunteer firefighter, right? And that will continue. And I'd be remiss in not acknowledging Chris's service to the country, because he was in the Army for 20 years, right? Serving at West Point, the Pentagon, and also tours of duty in Iraq and Afghanistan. So we certainly appreciate and thank you for that service. So I'm sure you're gonna have the best interests of the town in mind on the town board. I appreciate your service on the planning board. We started actually at the same meeting about five years ago. The board is, has been a better board because of your service, and if I can speak for everybody here, we wish you all the best.
Thank you, John. I'm not really one for a whole lot of attention, but I do thank you, John. It was unexpected. And of course, I have the town's best interest in mind, that's why I sought higher office. And I hope to continue the work that the planning board's been doing here, the great work that's been doing, and actually, you know, whatever we can do to support Lennar and Related and Crew to get this project going as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So I'll call to order the regular meeting, and our first order of business is to approve the minutes from our November 7th meeting. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes?
John, could I bring something up?
Sure.
So, you know, just to the process of having a review, the Tuxedo Farms, the ARB and the site plan review. Susan and I raised some, you know, items of concern that were valid, and I think several times it was brought up that you are, as a board, our authority is kind of restricted to compliance with the smart code and the architectural guidelines. I don't think that's completely correct if you read the wording of the special permit. I think that it's a guideline that suggests that we check for compliance with those codes, but it does, the Article 8 still does say that we should have the authority to review and approve as your normal process. So I just, I think we should consider that as we move forward. I don't believe our authority is limited to only checking for compliance with the smart code.
Kelly, do you want to get into that now or later on when we're talking about ARB?
I'll just briefly address it now. So I informed the board at your last meeting that I would be preparing a memo for you that outlined your specific authority and jurisdiction under the special permit. And I purposely did not give that to you before tonight's meeting, because you really weren't gonna be getting into that this evening. However, the applicant did bring a couple of changes for their ARB submission, just to pass them by you to show that they're taking your concerns from last meeting into account. But you will have that memo which outlines all of that with the special comment and the code and state law as well before your next meeting. Tonight's meeting was really supposed to be focused on your subdivision jurisdiction and your clearing, filling, and grading jurisdiction. So that's why you didn't get a detailed memo before tonight. I didn't want to confuse this already confusing project, and we're trying to keep it compartmentalized, if you will.
Sure.
But I do understand what you're saying, and I'll bring all that out in a minute.
Okay. Look forward to it.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. So back to the minutes, any other comments about the minutes? So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain because I haven't been here.
Okay, no problem. So the next thing is Tuxedo Farms, the Upland Park CFG permit. My understanding is that there hasn't been any clearing done yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. Sean, do you have any comments about this?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. So this was introduced at your last meeting in November. At that time, we went over verbally a couple items that we had questions with. Rather than issue a memo for this meeting, I just incorporated a couple less items that I had into the draft resolution that Kelly circulated. So I don't have a written report for you, but if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to go through those.
And I don't believe you have any, Valerie. Kelly has prepared a draft resolution for this.
Yes.
If you would go over the specifics and any other relevant information?
So just a couple of things that I did want to mention, if anybody's following along. On the top of page three, I have in bold italics, as I usually do, any actions or things that I want to bring to your attention. And the first is that I put, on December 5th, 2023, the planning board reaffirmed the January 2023 secret findings statement, and then a public hearing was held on this application on December 5th, 2023, when it was closed. The next line, I did note that a response by voicemail was received from the Department of Planning on November 1st. And I have no changes to the proposed specific conditions, just to draw your attention to specific condition 1A, references the tree survey that you asked about earlier. So so long as the applicant confirms that the area included in the application is within the limits of the development of the future roads and lots, there's no need for a tree survey. And the other thing I just wanted to specifically point out is number three, where it says that this board is not approving anything that's within the Village of Slutsburg. So I don't know if you want me to read the conditions, or everybody's good, you've seen it.
Well, there'll be, if there's any soil importation or exportation, that you'll have to return to the planning board, right? Only between the hours of 8:00 to 5:00, and no operations on Sundays or holidays. The building inspector and the town engineer will be monitoring this. I think that was basically it. So does any members of the board have any questions about this permit or the resolution? Yes?
Just one quick question. I wanted to make sure that was Monday through Saturday. Sunday's the only day that can't work, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Because some of the other stuff was Monday through Friday, right?
Yeah, most of our, our stuff is.
Okay.
Yes?
When you say tree removal, are you talking about cutting the, in place, cutting the, taking them out, cutting them out, taking the stumps out?
So no stumps. The stumps have to stay. Because as we get into removal of stumps, then you start to get into, we get a little closer to what you may proceed to be grading. So the intent is to fall the trees and organize them so that they can be removed off-site. We will not, we will not stump them, and as long as we follow that procedure, we stay within the general parameters of what the DEC expects as far as tree clearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment on that or ask the applicant a question. Have you gotten something back from Region 3 that that is acceptable?
So we are in the process of getting that.
Okay.
In the meantime, the commitment is that if, so we've been asked to confirm that the DEC will allow us to take the trees down and organize them the way we want to on the site. Your engineer has suggested that we should provide something from them. We have gotten this before from DEC. We're in the process of getting it. However, the commitment is, we will just fall the trees unless we have that verification from the DEC.
Okay, so that's hand-felling of trees.
So we're gonna demonstrate that we can do it with mechanical equipment as part of a satisfaction of a condition of approval, maybe the best way to handle it.
Okay, so the way I intend to process this, Mr. Chairman, as you know, it's gonna go for your signature in a building, sorry, a clearing permit's gonna need to be issued by the code enforcement official. So that condition in there, I'm gonna treat that like a checklist. So if the applicant provides that, the letter you receive from me will identify what they've, DEC has indicated they can do. If they don't provide that, and they then change to hand-felling or something like that, I'd also let you and the code enforcement official know that.
More curiosity, anything else? Will you be removing the cut trees from the site during winter or to the term?
Yes, as long as the weather permits that to be our intention.
And are there any ash trees on the site?
I'm not sure I can answer that question for you.
And I'm not sure about this. If there are ash trees, aren't there restrictions for where that wood can be taken because of the ash board issue?
Yes, I believe so. But I think the applicant's gonna check the DEC as part of that condition we talked about above, and if there are restrictions associated with that, then they might need to get a permit from the DEC.
Should Kelly incorporate any of these things into the resolution, the final version, or?
Well, I just showed Sean a potential condition regarding hand-felling and the mechanical. He said that it is covered already in there. In terms of removing the ash trees, I think that that would be up to the applicant and also satisfied by General Condition Number 1. I think you're fine there.
Okay.
But I don't know where you can dispose of ash trees.
Yeah, I don't either. I think there's some restrictions about that.
Somebody will know with the DEC.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
I did. Did you go before the Slutsburg planning board for their, that clearing, tree on their side?
We are scheduled to go before them next week, I believe.
Oh, okay.
For the roadway construction. 19th, two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, there's a condition in here that what we will approve does not approve anything to Slutsburg.
Yes.
They have to do, as they well know.
I agree.
And if we, so the important thing is that we get a majority of these trees down within the area that we intend to develop, and if some of these edges become an issue and sometimes the timing isn't right, we're still gonna work within our site. We want to be able to work within our, within your jurisdiction and the clearing and grading permit that we hope you're gonna grant.
Chris or Bill, any questions on this?
So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution is approved. I believe this is the first time that we've had a public hearing on an issue and approved the resolution at the same meeting. We usually spill it over for another month. I didn't see that there was any need to do that, so.
Little bit of expedited. We appreciate the work as well.
And just so it's clear for the record, by approving the resolution, you've also reaffirmed the secret findings, so.
That, I don't think that was in the resolution, or was?
It was in the bold italics part, but by approving the resolution, it does that. So I just wanted everybody to know they're gonna be unitalized.
Okay. Next item is the Commons Quail Road, the amended subdivision. So if somebody wants to just describe that briefly, what we're doing and why it's amended for the second time.
So this is in essence a further subdivision of the parcels that are associated with the Commons. It's primarily to allow for the development of buildings on parcels, because as you know, Related and Lennar are working together on the Commons, and so this creates parcels. We can build the roads, we can leave these freestanding lots, and they can be developed independently, they can be closed on independently, so there's a, this further subdivision allows us to manage the way the real estate and the buildings get built and closed on and the transaction happens. That's really all this is about. We haven't changed the areas, the perimeter of the Commons is exactly as it was, the configuration is one that you've seen before. This is really just about dividing up the land so that it could be managed in a more efficient way between Related and Lennar.
There's no new additional lots created, whereas in the past, there was a series of buildings on one subdivided lot, now something on common or only subdivided lots. It was just, again, just the way we carve off the common, it's a line drawing exercise in essence.
This was, this was one single lot, now it's three. If you look at the layout for this area, each of these lots has a building sitting on it. It's really all it is about.
Didn't we discuss that at the last meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's the same one that I showed you last month.
That's what I thought. I thought maybe it's something different.
No, no, we just need to take the next step.
The next step. The last meeting was a public hearing, and tonight we just sort of captured. Nothing new.
And that's it?
That's, there's nothing else? I couldn't make up any more since I wanted to.
I'm sure you can.
Well, you give me enough time, I could, but.
Valerie, you have any?
No, I don't have anything on this one.
Sean?
Nothing new, Mr. Chairman.
Kelly, you wanna go over the, Kelly has prepared a draft resolution, so.
Yes, so I did have a couple of minor changes, which I will point out just so that the board has them. In the very first paragraph, I have taken out of the heading and corrected the applicant here, because now it's U.S. Home LLC DBA Lennar, rather than AKA LR Tuxedo Development Group LLC, care of the related companies, all that land transfer stuff that they were talking about. So that's corrected. Then later down, where it says, "With frontage along New York State Route 17 and the town tuxedo," the next sentence is, "The first amended application approved in June 2023, modified, et cetera, et cetera." So again, minor revisions. On the top of page four, I again just corrected that one was the first amended application. And footnote two on page five, corrected pursuant to the language in the special permit. So that now says, "Payment of fees shall be postponed until a building permit is issued for each unit as set forth in Special Permit Article 16, Subsection C." And that's it. And then the specific conditions are just 1 through 7 and no changes.
Want to just read those quickly?
Sure.
Everybody has read it yet.
So specific condition, 1, "This approval shall be subject to the special permit approval from the Town of Tuxedo Town Board dated November 22nd, 2022, as amended from time to time, and the satisfaction of all applicable conditions that may be contained therein." Number 2, "Prior to signing of the plat, the applicant shall A) comply with the applicable comments contained in the memorandum of the town planner dated September 29th, 2023, to the satisfaction of the town planner; B) submit the plat to the town engineer for a final engineering review of the plat. The plat shall not be signed until receipt of a letter from the town engineer indicating that the plat submitted for signature is in proper order. And in compliance with this resolution, C) revise the plat to show monuments to be set at all street intersections, angle points, and street lines, points of curvature, and immediate points along the right-of-way per Town Code Section 8530A3F. D) revise the plat to indicate no construction or ground disturbance is authorized as part of this subdivision approval. E) revise the plat to show all proposed easements, including any easements required for snow storage. Said easements shall be drafted to the satisfaction of the town attorney as to form. Proof of filing the easement with the Orange County Clerk's Office shall be provided to the Building Department prior to the issuance of the first building permit for the Commons or Quail Road. F) offer to dedicate those portions of Quail Road and Bridle Trail Road that are proposed as public roads for highway purposes. Such documents shall be in a form acceptable to the town attorney. Three, it shall be the responsibility of the applicant to maintain the roadways, including the removal of snow and ice until such time as the roadway is accepted by the town as a public road. Four, prior to the issuance of any building permits for any lot, the applicant shall obtain site plan and Architectural Review Board approval for each such lot as required by the special permit as amended. Five, the applicant shall comply with all mitigation measures outlined and set forth in the Town of Tuxedo Planning Board Involved Agency finding statement dated January 12th, 2023. Six, blasting is not proposed as part of this subdivision approval should blasting be required for the development of Quail Road and/or the Commons during site plan review. A blasting plan shall be provided to the planning board for review and approval per Article 10 of the 2022 special permit. Number seven, in accordance with Article 6 of the 2022 special permit, the applicant shall offer to dedicate that portion of Quail Road and Bridle Trail that is within this portion of the project to the Town of Tuxedo. Such offer of dedication shall be filed with the Orange County Clerk's Office, and proof of such filing shall be provided to the Building Department prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Thank you, Kelly.
That's like a quiz on my Roman numerals right now.
Any members of the board have questions about this?
No.
No. So I'll make a motion to approve the amended major subdivision resolution. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the other thing that we can request of Kelly tonight is to prepare a resolution for our January meeting for site plan approval.
Yes.
For this. I have a question about that. And that's, I know we're gonna talk a little bit about ARB issues a little later on, informally, I think. Can we approve that site plan without ARB approval in January?
Yes.
We can.
Yes, the special permit was amended to a lot of the details.
Right, I remember. I just wanted to verify that.
Yep.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to authorize Kelly to prepare a site plan approval resolution for January. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the next thing is to schedule a public hearing for the West Terrace, which is a single-family and townhouse portion for January. Do you want to discuss that at all at this point? No?
I could, I'd be glad to go back through it. There's, it's what we presented last month.
Right.
We're really just looking for the board to schedule the public hearing. But I'd be glad to answer any questions, present to boards, if there's something from the public that has a question, I'd leave it to the board's discretion.
Does anybody want a review of that, the West Terrace? Okay. So I'll make a motion to authorize Kelly to prepare that.
Public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing. I'll make a motion to have a, to schedule a public hearing for January for West Terrace. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is January 2nd?
Yeah.
So everybody has a quorum? So everybody is gonna be here? Nobody's?
I haven't heard that. Does anybody have a problem with January 2nd? It's a Tuesday.
Really?
Obviously, the day after.
January 1st is the aspirant, anyway, so.
There you go.
I should be okay by then.
Just make it sure, you know?
We will have a vacancy, but hopefully everybody else will be able to make it. So that's approved.
Thank you. We obviously will make a more full presentation, and I, for the benefit of the folks, we'll do another, do over.
Okay. Now, I think you brought some samples of material with you tonight, so this is an informal review, or?
It's formal. They are just, any plans that they show you should be submitted, just so the Building Department has that. But what they really wanted to do was show, I don't want to speak for them, my understanding is, show you that they heard what you were saying and to try and make some minor revisions to kind of make things pop, make it look more tuxedo, all those key words people said last month. Is that right?
That's, that's a good, good question.
I'm almost there.
And so we are making a submission on, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, 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 even you.
Go ahead.
So we are making a submission this Friday on West Terrace, and certainly including the materials that we're about to show tonight as part of that submission package. What we wanted to do, it was a good discussion last month, we wanted to build up that momentum, and Mitch and his team heard the concerns, looked them seriously, went back, and I hope you will agree with what we're gonna do tonight. We made the comments, and Kelly's right, we made a couple of additions that Mitch will walk through, and again, we focus on this, we will continue the discussion in January. We didn't want to wait till January to first discuss this, we hopped right on it, and we hope you'll be pleased with what you see.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Mitch Newman with Lennar again, and thank you again for getting us this far along. So as Brad said, what we, although our position, as you heard, was we comply with this architectural guidelines, et cetera, but we heard the concerns that we wanted to be responsive. So three things tonight to talk about. One is, we do have some sample building materials that are in those boxes that we can show you, of course, that's the stone, the brick, and the siding, and the roofing, and all that. On the single-family homes, we got some better pictures, so to speak, and took the renderings and had. and took the renderings and had them placed on print paper or photo paper and printed more professionally, and they, I think, show a better picture for the single-family homes. We did that also for the townhomes and the stacked townhomes, but in the context of the townhomes and the stacked townhomes, we did make some adjustments, which we hope you'll agree are responsive to your concerns. So I can start any, any way. I'll just start with the renderings and all that, and then we can jump over to the materials, if that's okay?
Sure.
We hope it's really heavy and it's, it would be, it's kind of choppy to go there. So for the single-family homes, we did not make any changes to the homes, but what we were concerned about is that the pictures we presented had a bluish hue to them, or they just weren't sharp. So these are very similar to what I presented, but they're computer-generated renderings. So they almost look like pictures, I, I have to tell you, of, of actual homes, but they're not, and that's, I guess, a testament to the computer can do anything and make it really look real. So that, that's all this is showing you. Now, what we also did is, this is the same sheet. Sorry, I'm going to get in front of you. I apologize. The same sheet, SK1, that you saw previously, but now we've printed it on a higher-definition photo paper, so we think it has a little bit better look to it, and hopefully, you would agree, presents a better picture of this home type, which is, which is the first Model A. Remember, there's three models, and each model has three elevations. Then the next one is Model B, and again, they're the same homes you saw before, but I, I hope you will agree, the colors now pop, and you can see some of the color differences and, and the relationship to the stone and the brick elevations. And then the third is, should we see? Is Model C. And again, my point is to show that in the prior version, which we do have, if you want to look back at what it looked like, but in the prior version, everything had this bluish hue, it was a little hard to see. The colors weren't really defined, so I think we did a better job of presenting it. And to tell you the truth, I've been doing this for more than a couple of decades, closer to three or four, and I've never printed it on this photo paper, but that's going to be our new method at Lennar, because it looks a zillion percent better. So thank you for, for pushing us. So that's, the, the rest of it is, is just going back to what it was on the regular paper. And again, just for the fact that, just because we turned the sheet, you can see this is what we presented to you last time.
It does look blue.
Yeah, it, it looked blue. It didn't look that bad when we first looked at it, but then when we went back and said, "Does that look blue?", and then when we had our, our guy print it, he said, "Okay, well, jeez, what did, what did we save? 10 cents?", and we did it the cheap way, and it looked like, it looked poor. So on the singles, what I wanted to do is just show you that they, that we're very proud of the homes. We do think they look beautiful, but we weren't putting our best foot forward. You might say, in these computer-generated photos, you might say, "Hey, wait a minute, Mitch, you're, you're jipping us. Where's the hardware on the garage doors?" That's how you can tell, this isn't a tuxedo farm presentation. These are homes we're going to be building in another community in New Jersey, same style, but we didn't have to put the garage hardware, but I had these in computer-generated forms. So I just wanted to show you that the homes really, in my opinion, I hope you'll agree, they do look good. We just didn't give you a great perspective first go around. Next, I want to present to you is the two-story townhomes. And if you recall, the commentary on the two-story townhomes that, or at least the commentary we took back, was that the front of the homes and the back of the homes needed something. So on the front of the homes, where we have what is called the smaller gable, larger gable, smaller gable, the smaller gable, we reconfigured the windows so we could add shutters. So what does it do? It breaks it up by putting the shutters there and gives it just a little pop of another color to create a little bit more diversity to the front of the home. What we also did is, you had challenged us that, and this still isn't perfect. The sidewalks will connect, I promise, in reality, but, but you had said that, "Can we do something to maybe add another color to the driveway?", and I wasn't very receptive to that. But we did talk about maybe those areas where we have a thinner space between the garages that we can change it up by putting in stone, which will do a lot better than a little grass strip, which you know just won't survive. So the stone does two things. It'll actually survive forever, it'll look good forever, and it adds just another splash of color to the front of the home and breaks up the driveway a little bit.
Is that going to be loose stone, or? Because if it's loose.
Yeah, typically, we do like a river rock. You know, with the matting underneath and.
What about when the snow plowing, it's going to?
We, I try to keep it so it's probably a half-inch below the blacktop level, so it hasn't been an issue.
And the other thing we did is, if you remember, I said to you that the back of these homes would be possibly visible from the Commons. And your response was, "Well, that, it's three stories, because the grade is going down. Can we do something else back there?" So what we did is two things. First, we're giving you this angled perspective, which we didn't give you before, because I wanted to emphasize that the back of each home will have its own porch or, or deck. And that deck creates another opportunity for color, and obviously, when people start populating that with chairs and umbrellas and, and the things that everybody does and flowers, it'll really look lived in and, and it'll have another splash of color. But just what we, what we showed you on what I would call the 2D view, it was really hard to see that, that perspective, that the deck was standing out there with, with a different look. And then what we also did is, we added this white bandboard trim that goes along the top third, and then, as you can see, it comes down between each home. So it gives a little bit more definition to the side of the homes as well as to the back, so it just added one, one other element. So we're hoping that that, that along with providing the shutters in the front and the stone between the driveways is responsive to some of the comments that you had.
That's an improvement.
This is just, oh, is this the, okay, so this is the stacked townhomes.
We did change some colors too, like we played with some contrasting siding colors as well.
So we didn't, what we did here in the stacked townhomes is in the fourplex, you remember the comment was that we had this horizontal siding going the whole way, and the question was, is this one big old condominium in the middle of the fourplex? Because in the other larger six-unit, five-unit buildings, it seemed like every other unit had a change, so you could kind of see the definition. But we didn't do that in the fourplex. So what we did is, we went back and we made it so that in the fourplex, you have the two ends, which are obviously different, and then you have from the middle, and then in the middle, there's two different, one with the vertical, the one with the horizontal siding. So I, I'll say thank you for that, because it, I think, looks a lot better, and it takes away that, that big old condo kind of look where you couldn't tell how many units were actually taking place in the middle of the building.
The siding's a different color, it looks like.
Yeah, it looks like a couple shades different.
It does look like it, but it's really, it's not that different. It's the photo quality that helped tell our story. So that's why I say, this was, this is going to be our new standard going forward, not, not just for tuxedo, but wherever we make these presentations. Because it looks 100% better. All of a sudden, you can see the color differences, and they were just getting all faded together in the, the other way we printed it, which is right off an office plotter, without this, this thicker photo paper. So those are the, the changes to the townhomes, the three-story stacked townhomes, and just a better picture for the single-family homes. Next, I'd like to show the building materials. That's okay?
I'm sure we got everything we wanted to talk about. Yeah, probably.
Are we, did you carry this?
I've been going to the gym, of course, like weeks ago.
Okay, so the point of these two boxes is to show two different color palettes. If you remember, in the architectural guidelines, we have several different color packages. And so we figured, let's just bring a couple, and so you'll, you'll kind of see how they go together. I think the photo quality does a good job, but let's go through this. So so in this color package, there's an opportunity for this ledge stone, which is kind of like a, a different variety of the stone, or a brick color, which is more of almost a whitish tone to the brick, or a weathered look to it. And then that would be paired with vertical?
Yes.
With a, a vertical siding and, which is a grayish tone, and then a horizontal siding, which would be a cream color. So this would either be paired with a stone or with, with the brick as we saw a moment ago, and then Lisa had those.
Did you put them over here on the case?
Sorry.
No, just kidding.
So with that particular color package, we would be offering more of like a brownish-type shingle to kind of complement those warmer colors. And those would be driven by elevation from where the vertical board and baton versus the horizontal with the side, and then whether or not you would get the stone.
The siding?
Shingles.
I'm sorry?
The brownish is. Like other siding or roof?
Roof shingles, yeah. So that's the roof shingles that would go with the color package of the vertical, horizontal, and stone, or these, or the vertical, horizontal, and the brick. And either way, the roof would stay the same. So again, there's multiple color packages. We're just going to show you two of them, just to give you a kind of sample of the styles that you saw in the photos. Let's go over to the second one.
And then we'll go across the different house types, like single-family home and the.
Yes, so with our multi-family or pad product, we typically pick a few of those exterior elevations that are outlined in the side guideline. Which would be, single families, we give full spectrum. So all of those color packages will be available soon.
With regard to the shingle, that a 40-year, 50-year, 60-year, 1,000-year, what is?
That is an excellent question, and I'd be happy to bring that answer back to you. I need to consult with our purchasing team on that one.
It's definitely not the 1,000. But you wouldn't be able to, we couldn't check on that anyway, so I could say.
I, I would prefer much longer because of HOA.
Yeah.
I would like to see a longer than 30 years, so.
Okay, well, Lisa, you'll check on that, particularly, the only time that the HOA agency involved in the roof shingles would be in the stacked townhomes, condominium style.
Right.
But, yeah, we can look at that.
And not the freestanding private homes.
Correct.
Because they're responsible for their own.
Correct. It doesn't mean they should get a shorter warranty, but we'll look at what it is.
Right. I'm, I'm more pro HOA, so that they don't have to bother replacing it before the time is up. That's longer, the better.
All right, so the second color package, you can see the stone is more of a, a gray ledge stone, okay?
Yeah.
It is, it's very. And the brick is more of a classic red, and then the vertical siding would be the, the gray again. And then more of, I, I, it looks more white to me in the horizontal siding. So your package would be with the bricks or with the stone, and then Lisa has the corresponding.
Then we would go with like a black shingle for that. This is more designed to be like the cool color package.
Is that natural stone or manufactured stone?
That's synthetic.
Yeah, it's made out of concrete. It's very heavy. They're precast, pretty much.
It looks heavy.
All right, you saw.
Your muscles twitching.
So we just wanted to give you a sample of the colors that, that are kind of what we saw in some of these photos that do look a lot better in the photos, but I think they also do look better in person. So Kelly, as a matter of procedure, do we leave these or bring these samples back and then leave them? I don't know what, what formally needs to be the record.
You can bring them back. You can bring them back. We don't keep them or anything like that. And I, I know that you wanted to go to the gym again, so.
I think we can, I'm happy to leave them.
I think that I just don't, I just don't want anything to happen to them between now and then with the holidays, any parties or anything like that. But if you could, for, and I'll ask Brad this, whatever you're planning on using, could you do a material list, like make, model, color, stuff like that?
Absolutely.
Just so that it's clear.
Pictures of?
Yes. Yeah, and if you could take pictures on it.
Take some of those with it, and we'll.
That would be great. And I'll consider that for the record.
I was just going to say, I mean, if, if you want to leave them in that back corner, that's fine, because bringing them back and forth, I'm sure is a pain in the neck. It's just hard to, you know, as you can see.
They're going to sit in the, in my trunk till January 7th.
If they'll fit in that corner, that's, I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I. I appreciate that. And if they get taken, they get taken. Yeah, build a house for them.
Can I just ask one clarifying question about that? When you say make model color, colors are often subject to change due to market availability. So are we being held specific to the color?
To a substantially similar color.
Okay, okay.
But usually, like Benjamin Moore, white doesn't usually change in Benjamin Moore, so things like that.
But sometimes I do discontinue colors that are in our current color packages, and we would look for similers to replace, so that's not a problem.
Kelly, when you prepare your letter advising us as to our role from an ARB perspective, I think it would be good if you addressed what the role of this is that was sent out by Deborah a month or plus ago. These are the, the design guidelines from the smart card.
Yes.
So you'll do that?
I'll do that.
Okay, well, thank you for your attention. Our goal was to show you that we, despite how we may have started the last meeting, we did want to show you some consideration and make some additions to our plan, which, as you can see, made them better. So thank you. Thank you for challenging us. We appreciate it. And hopefully, the enhanced colors with the photos and, and the real samples gave you a better feel for the proposed community and homes, which we're very proud of.
You mentioned you're building single families down in New Jersey somewhere. When would they be available to look at a finished version of a real house?
Probably, at least within 45 days, the first house in Opala.
With a single family?
Yeah, I saw it was in frame about three weeks ago.
Yeah, so that's because of the affairs.
So probably not till approximately later in January, end of January. Just, just to be perfectly clear, we did build these same, similar 40-foot-wide homes in a community in Tinton Falls in central Jersey, and, and that's the one we visited. We hesitated to take pictures of those because we were using some different materials, and those homes were subject to a really complicated water table. So we had to build the homes almost popping out of the ground by six or seven feet. So if you remember, Michelle, they had steps, like five or six steps to get up to the front door. It gives it a really stately look, but some folks don't really want to have to come into their home and always walk up five or six steps to get there, although it has a really nice streetscape. So if you wanted to visit those, if you wanted to visit them in person, I'd be happy to take any of you on a tour, and we'd have to talk about how, how we do that. You can visit on your own. I can give you an address. If you said to yourself, "No, I'll just go on Google Maps and put, put the little guy on the street", it doesn't show up yet. I've tried it. You can't do that, because those streets are still relatively new. So we have two choices. One is you can visit. Two, I could certainly take you on a walking tour. And then three is I could definitely. And then three is I could definitely take actual photographs, but I'd have to just warn you that the homes are popping out of the ground, which is not, you know, not what we're looking to achieve here. We'd like to stay as close to grid as possible. And second, we have some different colors that we used back then. It was pre-COVID, it was probably 2019, 1819. But they are still 40-foot wide with the same two-car garage and somewhat similar. So I need guided, however you're comfortable, or you can get back to me.
Yeah, I would encourage members of the board, let's try to get down there, but we can only go in groups of three at most?
Yes.
So we don't have a quorum, it can't be an official meeting.
Am I gonna pick out the three?
And when you're there. Try not to discuss the project, you know, try, just try, it's hard, but try not to just be like, oh, these are the houses, great, thanks. I don't want to have any open meetings violations or anything like that.
A lot of people from the public won't want to take a drive to central Jersey. So the photo option that you were talking about might be great if I can present it and put it online somehow where you can look at it. Of course, it's not prevalent to this application.
Right.
So we're just, you know, just make it very clear that that's not the case, but they get an idea of what a building looks like.
Easy to do, I live about 25 minutes from that site, maybe less. So I can get over there, take a few photos, and we can have them easily online, and I can get a few printed up.
This is Titten Falls, you said?
Titten Falls.
What's that close to? Is it close to Morristown?
No, no, it's Monmouth County.
It's at 105, it's.
Yes.
Yeah, that's south of the Anboy Bridges.
That's south of the Anboy Bridges, right? Yes.
You're getting down to the shoreline.
Yes, that's true.
Nobody from here is going.
There's also the townhomes instead of townhomes.
Didn't you say there was?
I held up down there, but. I'm picking you up in your house.
Didn't you say there was something near Morristown?
There's another development near Morristown. But the Morristown is more, what, the other project that we saw was the townhomes, right? Correct, you wouldn't see single families. Yes.
It's just a townhome, well, I mean, Morristown isn't bad.
No, it's not bad, and.
They're built?
Yeah, they're built, so there's townhomes there, there's two-story, three-story.
Are they comparable designs to what you're proposing for here?
They're comparable size, some of the exterior features are going to be a little different. I have to think about it, I haven't been to our, you should think about the collection at Morristown.
Collection at Morristown has the same 20-foot townhomes that we would be bringing forward to Tuxedo. The collection at Morris Plains, it also has the three-story townhomes that we're utilizing, but the facades have been changed to be more complimentary to the commons for this area. So the exteriors are to be a little different material-wise.
It is closer for you, probably an hour away?
Yeah, I know where Morristown is.
Okay.
So it's about an.
I know where Titten Falls is.
It's really, Titten Falls is about.
Probably an hour and 10, hour 15 at most.
Yeah, it's not that bad, but, right, you hear exit 105, when we go to Cape May, it sounds crazy, it's not that bad. But if you did want to go to one of our Morris Plains or Morristown area communities, again, we could set that up if you want to go individually, of course, I can give you an idea of where to go. Or if you'd like to go, as Kelly suggested, in a group of two or three, we'd be happy to meet over there and have a walking tour, then we can drive to the other community and, again, take a look. So 100% your call, but in the meantime, I'll get you the photos from the Titten Falls site, so there's no obligation to take that ride.
And I think the changes you've made are certainly good.
Thank you, appreciate that.
The appearance is much better.
Yeah, I thought so too, I was shocked at how better, how much better it looked than what we had on the regular hot paper.
Not to sound like I'm seeing in your soul, but when I asked you about the black top and the white garage doors.
Yeah.
It seemed to me like you were sort of hiding into your product as opposed to a site. Had you really looked at what some of the streets look like when they're gray? Bramerton has a road in Tuxedo. Every time a street surface, they use the eighth-inch bluestone on top. And it just looks a world different than blacktop. Driveways that way and annual roads that way make a huge difference. You have a lot of black, and, you know, the gray does look a lot, a lot better, a lot more special.
So my understanding is to get that color, you have to add a little bit more stone to get it.
You top it with the three-eighths bluestone and drive it in after the blacktop's on and still teeny a little bit soft. It's, you know, drive to Bramerton, take a look. It looks better, you have a lot of it. So a lot of it looking better means the whole thing looks better. I'll give you the white garage doors if you insist on it.
But as the roads are resurfaced, Bill, especially the town roads, they use that chip.
Yeah, and it looks a lot better.
Or lives home.
So those will.
Looks more like Tuxedo.
That will eventually.
Tuxedo does.
Occur on the town roads and maybe even on your probably maintained roads, so.
We have an internal construction approvals meeting actually coming up this Thursday in a couple of days. So if you wouldn't mind, while I'm concerned about costs and without knowing how expensive this issue is, it's always a concern, but let us take a look at it and see if there's something.
There's a relationship. In other words, you're building, got a lot of roads and a lot of driveways, so there's a lot of cost. But there's also a lot of visual impact.
We'll look at it.
Yeah.
One thought on the driveway though, I mean, typical maintenance, you have to seal them. So if it's, you're talking about changing the color of driveway, you won't be able to seal it without changing the color.
It poses a lot of engineering issues, and if you're talking about basically a chip seal on top, so it's a liquid, the most part of it goes down, it's like asphalt, and you put the chips on top of it. So the wear and tear is a problem, the plowing in the winter is a problem. If you think the stone between the driveways is a maintenance issue, the chips become a maintenance issue, you find the block. So it's a balancing act, I'm not trying to say that it's not doable.
This is how all the roads in Tuxedo are done, it can't be horrendous because.
It's terrible driving.
They're also typically, you've got low-volume streets, or you have high-volume streets with a lot of traffic. They don't wear too well, so the maintenance problems is just pieces of this that apply to that kind of a surface. And it just has engineering components.
I like the idea of the stone in between the homes that segregate the driveways.
And we narrow the driveways a little bit.
Yeah, this way you turn around, a homeowner goes, yeah, that's my driveway. I have to pave it, I'm not gonna want to touch his.
Right. Yeah, I think on our first discussion, the driveways were 20, 20-foot, and we brought it to 18.
Oh, and you were able to put that two-foot or whatever.
Yeah. It gave them color pop also. So there was a lot of different subtle changes that built on each other by doing what you all suggested. So I mean, that was also.
Kelly, Ned had a question about the school lot, can we address that or?
I don't remember Ned's question about the school lot.
No, he hasn't.
He hasn't asked it yet, okay, good. Like somehow I heard it, I guess, and I lost it, so.
I know that's a taboo because that's something between the board and, you know, right, and the app. So the only thing I had suggested during the site plan approval when it came, when it first came before us, I made a suggestion, and it was agreed upon. But I don't think Lamar is familiar with it, so this is why I want to bring it up again. This was about, should in the event the school decides they want to build a building over there, I was looking more for central hookups. So instead of saying, okay, they're gonna build a building over there, now we have to put electric there, we gotta put gas, even though they're saying they're not doing gas in their community. Okay, electric, water, sewer. So I had asked if it would be possible, since you're building the sewer system, and you already got majority of your waters already in, they would just tap off and add a central location for a hookup. So that if the school wants to hook up their sewer to it, they can, tap off of their water, have their own little depot for like a, you know, central area on the lot where, okay, this is where your sewers, this is where you're, where you can put your transformers for your school, whatever, your electric hookup, you know, your water electric, whatever, sewer. And I believe they agreed to that. Basically, he said it kind of like this, done. That's the comment that he made, remember that?
Who said that?
Who said it?
Did I say that?
I forgot the gentleman's name. He seemed to be the boss of your project.
Correct. Was it related people?
Yeah, he had an accent, yeah. So he had said, fuck, that would, no problem, done.
So you understand that there are utilities.
Utilities in the town road?
In the town road right in front of the school lot, so I'm trying to, from engineer, I'm just trying to understand exactly what you guys.
I think it was somewhere where the water tower was, I think that's where the school project is back there? Where the land is, where the land is your connection to the school.
Right, so where the school lot is, it's very close to some of the town roads that come up over by U-Hart. So that's where the anticipated connection would into the towns, sewer, water lines.
Right, that's what I had suggested, can you just like extend it? Just a, I don't know, maybe, I assume, I'm just gonna throw a number out, 30 yards.
The utilities for this project aren't coming off of that line, they're coming. So it's closer to connect the school lot to the towns' utilities than it is to connect to this project.
Is my question?
So we just pulled up a map, I think Sean can weigh in on it.
Yeah, so the water storage tank is much higher, right? So to get to the school lot, although it does touch the utility lot where the water storage tank is, they'd be coming into the back of that parcel, you wouldn't normally feed a parcel that way. It looks like the school lot has frontage on both Quail and whatever goes over to North Ridge Road.
Right.
I know they already have sewer in that area, and I believe they're gonna have water in that area because they're gonna have to run water down to the maintenance shed. So they would be able to, I believe, tie in on the town road or at that intersection with the future connection to North Ridge Road.
Right, and the reason why I had suggested that was because it made sense. Instead of digging up roads again to feed the school lot, you know, you gotta remember, I'm not an engineer. I'm thinking, okay, well, why should I rip up a brand-new street to run these utilities for a school? If should they decide they want to build it and then destroy another street again, now I gotta repave it. Just to have it built, ready, and have a central hookup, that was.
I don't think that you're gonna be able to do it where you're thinking at the end of the West Terrace Road. I think what Sean is saying is that they're gonna have direct access to these. You will have to go into a town road, but you would have to do that on any town.
They wouldn't have to, if they were to do a hookup, they wouldn't be in function on this development, right?
They would not be, they would go straight from the new school lot to a town road. And if the school already has that availability at its current location, really, they're just gonna, hopefully, just put a line in under whatever field to whatever building.
Okay.
Okay, well, if there's a building, then there's a hookup.
Yeah, when I had made that suggestion, it was just, you know, a thought, not an.
Okay.
I can definitely look at it with the applicant, I don't know.
Your comment is make sure this is utility access, or we'll refer Sean and confirm that.
Yeah, to make sure that they have the ability to tap in somewhere.
Tell them it's a little expensive.
It was more like a, you know, hey, can we work together kind of thing.
But I don't even know if the town is, I mean, the school district is not right now opposing anything. So that's another, right, so that information would also have to be known, you know, to really determine what would be needed.
I think we can work with Sean and demonstrate to the board that there will be access to the infrastructure at the school parcel, which I think is what you're suggesting, and as convenient and accessible as possible. I think a couple of things that will come into play is, we don't know what size of building, so we don't know what size services to run, right? So I think more importantly, can we demonstrate that if the school wanted to connect to the sewer, there's a gravity connection, right? Or if they want to connect and there's a large enough water main to connect to. So I think those are the kind of things that I'm guessing Sean's gonna say to us, demonstrate that to me. And then we are, in essence, giving you what you're suggesting should be done, and that is provide access to the school parcel with utilities. We just aren't gonna run to the property, and I'm afraid we're gonna run the wrong size, and then we're gonna dig up the road anyways.
Right, okay, I'm good with that.
One final question, is any progress on the power project?
Yeah, Adam's been working on that, and have we formally introduced Adam to the board?
I think so, he was at the list.
I was at the list, and he can do it.
Adam is our senior construction manager for the Tuxedo Reserve Project.
So I actually met with Orger and Rockland today, I had a two-berry meeting with a guy named Tim Cunnings. He is gonna be the project manager for the electrical layout for the project. He also had a guy named Paul Presario at the meeting, who is an engineer, who's gonna be lead engineer, I guess, for the job. They were not willing to commit to either a pump state or a substation or not a substation. They were confident that since they are not, I guess, feeding the IBM property anymore, that they had enough line. So I was happy enough with actually getting in front of them, because it's not that easy to get in front of Orger and Rockland, and I'm gonna have a every-two-to-three-week meeting with them with progress updates. We're still waiting on some of our engineering and design, so that I can give them section by section. But, yeah, I mean, I guess that's, we're in the early stages of getting, you know, getting them on board, yes.
I would suggest that you have an electrical engineer study the project in its entirety and come up with an estimated load for each segment of development and submit that to ONR.
We did have, we did have load calculations done by a third party, I did submit the load caps to them. Until they get all of their collective minds together, it doesn't seem like they're willing to, you know, talk, I guess, off the record, so.
That's anticipating the electric heat that you had mentioned at the last meeting?
Yeah, so while we are thinking of it as an all-electric community, there is an opportunity for gas service that Adam is exploring because it seems that the law that is out there that says you need to be all-electric doesn't kick in for another couple of years.
Twenty, twenty-five, I recall, twenty-six.
Yeah, so December 31st, '25 is the drop-dead date. I was directed to a legislator who had said that if we were to get a will serve for the gas before that date, that they are not issuing any beyond that date, but as long as we have one for the project, that they'd be willing to service it with gas. One of the issues being is that the eight-inch polyline that they have in front of the community, they are thinking may not be enough to service the size of the development, and they'd be looking for contribution from us to increase that line to a 12-inch, which we're gonna have to do, you know, we're gonna have to do the value engineering and decide if it's worth it. But obviously, not doing any of that until, you know, we get a will serve.
One other point of consideration, if you're anticipating the possibility of a backup heating, gas heating system, in the event that ONR in Eastern New York can't provide the energy, I would suggest you consider where you would put a boiler or a heating unit in each of your structures. Because just having a gas supplier and not the space to put a unit to burn it doesn't make too much sense. So you're gonna need some space.
Right, we're gonna have to make some advanced decisions, which way are we going? Are we going all-electric, or are we going classic electric and gas? And since we aren't there yet, we're not ready to address that. But the homes that you have been looking at can accommodate electric and gas, so to just make them all-electric is easy, I mean, easy from an infrastructure standpoint. But they're already designed to accommodate gas also.
From a marketing point of view, as this. From, from a marketing point of view, as this December twenty-five day gets closer and closer and there's more and more information about the fact that you're not going to be able to get gas anymore, having a new home with gas is going to be a real plus. So you're going to be selling right into the, into the hoopla.
Yeah.
And, uh...
So we have to...
In my opinion, be worth it.
And that's right. That's another way to balance it. Adam's got to tell us, is it feasible? Then we have to look at the dollars to, to address a gas line. Um, and then we also have to look at, just as you said, the marketing aspect, because we don't want to change our marketing plan. If it's all-electric, we want to tell the public, it's all-electric, it's not going to change, it's, it's lovely, it'll be fine.
You have to decide what you're going to do, but I'm just...
Yeah, or if it's going to be electric, gas.
As this ticks along, it's going to get to be a bigger and bigger controversy, and more and more people are going to realize...
We're going to solve this.
Like we could be the last community building natural gas.
How do, how do you get, uh, a, a backup generator if you can't?
Of course, of course. We're going to use natural gas.
And, and if everything's electric and the power's out...
That's my house. I have one of those house generators.
Your car's electric, your door's electric, your heat's electric, your phone's electric, you know.
You know, the probability of the state of New York supporting that twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six new building requirement, it's just improbable going forward, because the infrastructure in the state of New York, about generation and transmission line capacity is just not there.
When I am...
Right now, it's, it's right now up to maximum.
Yeah, when I am saying Orange and Rockland are load counts for the electric and telling them that we were potentially putting in, you know, twelve-hundred E V chargers, um, in the homes, they were like, oh my lord, you know?
Do they know about the, uh, potential for electric heat and all these things? Have you discussed that with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Did, were they still sitting upright in their chairs when they heard that?
No, they're, they didn't want to answer anything. They were like, we got to get in front of big people.
You know, something, if they spoke honestly, they would tell you what I told you about the future of being able to support it.
Yeah.
So you got to think about that.
We want gas. We want gas, for sure.
Well, you want something reliable. And electric, I don't think it's going to...
And, and your point on the generators, I can speak personally to that. In, in my house, when the electric goes off, which happens too often, and we have underground everything, it's amazing why it, it goes off, our generator kicks on, and me and my wife are smiling. Best fifteen thousand we ever spent.
I just built my own house with a thousand gallon propane tank.
Yeah.
Is that what you have with propane, or is it not?
No, we're, we're natural gas.
See, that's beautiful.
And I, I spoke to, I remember it was on for two days straight, and I called, called the, the representative, and I said, boy, it's been two days. What, how long can it go? He said, we don't know, at least a couple of years. I said, really? So when the apocalypse hits, I'll be in good shape.
We'll up the air.
I'll be up to my house.
You live in New York, this place there in Sandy.
Yeah.
I was building my house then, and my guys, most of my workers were Chinese and Santa Fe, and they, they were below the, the cutoff. They had no power. Everybody came up to my house.
Right.
There were, there was one extension cord, like fifteen out, fifteen cell phones plugged into the garage.
Okay, I think, uh, I think we've covered just about everything tonight, right?
Chairman, can I just, Adam?
It will be very brief. Uh, when Brad was speaking before, he mentioned a, a submission's coming in for West Terrace. My understanding is that your public hearing that you scheduled this evening in January will be on the plans that the board already has in hand, and that that, those other plans will be considered at a later meeting. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so the plans that you're going to get soon, you can just put them on the bookshelf until after the January meeting?
You anticipate that it's going to be many changes from what we have now and what we will be reviewing in January?
I don't think so.
No, it's, it's, I think, a majority of the comments that we got from your staff were cleanup to the drawings. There are a couple of places where we are moving or widening sidewalks, but I don't think you'll be able to really tell the difference between one set of plans and the other. I think, I believe, your staff will pick up on the nuances and the differences.
So then what? Sean, you'll, you'll be reviewing those drawings still to come?
When those drawings come in, I will start the review of those. I think the whole point of them getting us those drawings ahead of time is so we can kind of get a running start, if you will, at those. So after you have your public, uh, hearing, any comments you get during the public hearing, they would have to make additional draft plan modifications, but this way, they've addressed the consultant comments, and they would only then have...
I know we're, we're projecting, uh, that resolution approval in March, I believe, right?
Yes, but I know that the applicant would love to raise the issue that they want a January special meeting, but I don't know that we are there yet to decide if one is warranted.
Okay.
And thank you, Clay, for raising it. Um, we don't want to make a decision on that tonight, but we just wanted to kind of plant the seed that when we submit this next set on Friday, I mean, it, it won't be discussed at the January second public hearing, um, but we'd like to come back sooner than the first Tuesday of February to hopefully talk about the submission we made in this week. By that time, Sean and Brad will review the submission. Um, so we stuck rather than vote on January second to the first Tuesday of February, to come back sometime mid-January, the second or third week, to discuss the submission that we're making in a couple of days.
Well, couldn't we not discuss it at the January meeting?
What do you mean, couldn't we not discuss?
Instead of having a, a second meeting in January to discuss it, couldn't we discuss it at the January, at the initial January meeting?
So part of the issue is that it has to get in early enough so that your consultants can give you memos on that, but also, once you set a public hearing, that public hearing is meant to be set on the plans that you've already received. So the publisher would basically be here, would be listening to and commenting on one set of plans, and then you'd start talking about another set of plans, so I think that kind of needs to weigh into it too, because of the appearance to the public. If you're talking now about something different that they didn't have the opportunity to comment on, too.
Look to the public. It's, it's not going to be material. If the public has comments on the drawing, it's going to be on the...
Try and tell that to the public. I don't know. Am I right?
Well, we can consider having a second meeting in January, if, if, if need be, um, or if we can somehow...
If we could somehow broach the topic that evening, I think we'll do so smoothly. But if we can't, then I think it'll just have to be...
If there are no comments from the public similar to tonight, can we then discuss them?
As long as your other consultants have written their memos and have sufficiently reviewed them.
So given the holidays that are coming up, and, and nothing needs to be decided now, you guys can talk, and if Sean and Brad think they'll have the review done in time for January second, and they get the public comments, and you can kind of go right to another session just on the plans this week?
Great.
If you only need more time, we could also consider doing the public hearing a week later, January ninth.
Yeah, what, what we could do is defer the public hearing, cancel the public hearing that you've scheduled this evening, forget the plans that you've scheduled the public hearing around, and then have the public hearing on the plans that they're going to submit.
On January ninth or so. Well, this you can get on the general...
The plans you haven't received yet.
Right.
I, I'd, I'd be reluctant to, to cancel the, the first public hearing.
I don't think it really makes sense, um, but I think what Sean's saying is to, to cancel it.
Yeah, okay, you agree with me.
I agree with you. Um, I think one thing that Sean's saying is, if you really want us to consider the second set of plans, well, we'll cancel this, and then we'll have to reschedule. Kind of a little, um...
Then it's a question of, are you, are you guys available, are the board members available? You know, there's other issues there, so...
Right, I think we should wait until January second and see what, what the board is, uh, approached with from the public.
Okay, okay. Okay, uh, so if there's nothing else?
John, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I do have one last question. I'm not sure it's for you or if it's for Sean or both, but we got a document from the county. It was an approval, but there was a whole list of items to consider.
The county county planning?
Right, um, so what's the process with that? Is there a lot of interesting, um, kind of...
The bottom line is there, it's for local determination, so we don't have to do any of that. It's really a guidance.
Right, you can consider, you should be considering their comments, but if they don't have anything down at the bottom where it says county, uh, recommendation, if it says local determination, you don't need to incorporate any of those. You don't need to vote on it with a majority plus one, but the board can talk about them.
Is, I mean, have these item, some of the items that they proposed, have they been discussed before? Like natural de-icers or the additional trees in the back, or the warranty bond for the landscaping? I mean, is that like anything we've ever talked about before?
Well, the bond will be part of any approval, I see, right, Kelly?
The bond, uh, for what?
Maintaining the landscaping.
Landscaping, it's usually in there for about a year, and then that expires.
But there's a bond to cover it for a year?
A year, if it's...
To be like an eighty-five percent survival rate, so there's a bond to make sure that it takes for the year, survives that first growing season, so that's what the bond covers.
Any landscaping issues, Susan, would be addressed when we do the A R D?
Okay, okay.
But understand the county usually makes suggestions that aren't necessarily applicable to each municipality. I mean, they represent, they are your liaison, I guess you want to call it, for the county of Tuxedo. But there's frequently a lot of recommendations that either don't make sense or maybe make sense for another community, and I always use the example of whenever you get a solar facility, they recommend that that company get goats to maintain, but the goats actually jump on the solar panels, so nobody wants the goats, and that's something that you see in there. So just to kind of balance that where it may not make sense here, if anybody else got that example I was trying to give, but...
So basically, I was just really, because this is the first I've seen, I was trying to understand the process. So basically, they're saying, hey, here's some other things that other folks have considered you might want to consider, but it's up to you.
Right.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody have a good, uh...
Yeah, happy to hear.